I'll call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors. It's June 11th, 2024 here in Palm Desert. And would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice as its own.
Give us the words in case we can't remember. Roll call, please.
Yes, good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
And Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Over there.
Here.
Here.
Thank you.
Nice to see everyone here. Are there any deletions, additions, or adjustments for today's agenda? Hearing none. Is there anybody from the public wishing to comment at this time? Don't see anybody. Oh, I know there's a, there's a script, there's a written thing on Tommy. I don't have my iPad open. I could, I could open it. Actually, I'm not sure I can find it.
Is there a script I can get?
Yeah, it was, it was one of the attachments. One moment, please. You might get it quicker than I do. It's just, it's attached on the item, on the presentations.
For...
Yeah. I read it, but I didn't memorize it.
Oh, didn't even know which one you were talking about.
There you go. Okay. So, special presentations and recognitions for today. We have quite a few anniversaries. I'll go through them and then we have, I believe, only have one that's...
I think we got two.
Or two. Oh, two, yeah, one also. That's, that's, so we have Tommy Folks with 30 years, Juan Medina with 20 years, Sal Montalvo with 20 years, David Peña with 20 years, and Mike Sempayon with 20 years. So congratulations to everybody, but we do have two presentations this morning. First is Tommy, and we'll have an opportunity for you to come up and get a photo and say a few words if you want to, but Tommy Supervisor with Development Services for 30 years. Once upon a time, I don't know who writes these things. Getting, "Once upon a time..." I'm assuming you didn't write this yourself. Tommy Folks drove to work in Palm Desert when Hovley Lane East was bordered by sand dunes and CVWD operated out of portable trailers. Spare setting aside, career opportunities and benefits led him to CVWD after a quality control inspector job at Arm Tech Defense in Coachella. His posts and work links, chlorine crew, control room operator, sanitation, zen harrow, source control, quality control inspector, and lead construction inspector, all led to his current role as development services supervisor in 2005. He also loves camping, hiking, and fishing in eastern Sierra Nevada lakes, especially those that you can access only by hiking. Home is in Yucca Valley and, and family support comes from his wife of 30 years Cindy, who works at 29 Palms Water District, and son Tyler, 27, a digital marketing coordinator for the city of Rancho Mirage, and daughter Savannah, 24, a flight attendant based in Las Vegas. So congratulations, Tommy, and I'll do one too before we get up. Juan Medina, Engineering Technician Two, 20 years. 20 years ago, Juan Medina began his career at CVWD as an Office Assistant Data Entry Operator. He was soon promoted to Office Assistant Two in December of 2005, and then promoted to Engineering Tech One in 2007. He came into his current position as an Engineering Tech Two in February of 2016, where he's the primary plan checker for all new development infrastructure projects. His technical expertise regarding CVWD infrastructure's design standards and attention to detail makes him a great asset for Development Services. Outside of work, Juan enjoys spending time with his family and stays busy traveling for his daughter's dance performances and competitions. So congratulations, both of you. Come on out and we'll do a...
One.
Congratulations.
Sure goes. Well, 30 years.
30 years. Quiet.
Okay, over to you, Tommy.
Man, it's been a long road, but it's been a good road. Been working with a lot of good people. Look forward to coming to work, working with everyone. Got a great staff, great team. Support here is great, and just makes it a great place to come and work. And it's been a great career. See how many more years I got left.
Did Kerry pay you anything still?
No. No, but it's, it's been a great 30 years. Seen a lot of changes here at the district for sure. Like I said, when we started here, we were portable trailers and the sanding out here with a little piece of asphalt. So it's interesting looking back at that, see where we're at today. So, but I want to thank you for the acknowledgement and see where we can... Say how many more years I got left.
Thank you for...
Do that.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Juan, congratulations. 20 years.
Congrats. 10 more, you'll be just like Tommy.
I smile, one, two, three, one, two, three.
All right, now it's your turn.
Well, I don't say much, but I want to say thank you. It's been 20 years. I'm fortunate to have been hired here. So yeah, hopefully another, at least 10.
There you go. Aim high, as they say.
I did want to point out, I didn't give out a name from my scripture in my family, and I heard about it, so my daughter's name, and very proud of her, so I just want to point that out.
Yeah. Dance competition. What kind of dance?
Hip-hop.
Every day. Jazz.
Jazz.
Ballet. Salsa. Maybe when she's older.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations. Thank you, bud.
Great. Consent calendar consists of Item 6A and B. Is there a motion to approve consent calendar?
A move approval. All second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass five oh. Onto action. Kind of a big grouping of things here, starting with 8A. Adopting the domestic rates for the new fiscal year. Carla, good morning.
All right. Good morning, President Powell, board members. Today before you, we have five different action items within the finance realm of the agenda. We do have one brief presentation for all items, but as we take the items, we can also go back and, and answer any questions between those items. But we'll give you one comprehensive presentation at the beginning. Just to acknowledge, the budget takes months to develop, right? We started since, since January through March, had a lot of internal discussions. I'm before you today, giving you the presentation, but I'm certainly not the only one that developed the budget. There was a lot of people, a lot of staff members, all the directors, supervisors, managers. They were, they put together assumptions, we reviewed them, we interrogated them at times. I'm sure they felt, you know, that, that we were asking a lot of questions. And, and so this budget also included the three study sessions we did, about five and a half hours of public meetings. So it's, it's a culmination of things. So even though there's a short presentation today, I want to acknowledge that there's a lot of work that went into the presentation overall. Let's see, can I control the presentation here? So as I mentioned, we did have three different study sessions, one on March 29th focused on the five-year CIP. There are some minor amendments to two of the funds, and we'll be discussing those today from what was originally presented on the CIP budget. Then we had an overall budget review on April 16th with all of the funds. And then again, a more focused discussion on May 21st regarding the domestic fund, and then state water project updates. The requests today, as I mentioned, include five different items. Today's presentation will highlight these particular items. We are requesting a domestic rate increase of 5%, a sanitation rate increase of 8.5%, and to approve canal gate charges and, and surcharges with the, all with an effective rate of July the 1st. And we also have a resolution for the overall operating and capital improvement budget approval, and then the annual requirement for the GAN limit. Let's talk about, a little bit about each one of these rate increases. Overall, all of the rate increases are at or below the current adopted Prop 218 maximum allowable rates, which means we don't have to issue additional notices with the recommendations that are included in today's agenda items. Public notice was provided regarding the discussion of proposed rate increases, both via the agenda and also in the publication for the newspaper. And today, we, I'm not sure if we have any public comment, but those are welcome as well. We don't have any rate increases that we are proposing for any one of the replenishment assessment charges, so no rate increases for West, Mission, or East Rack. We, for domestic, are requesting a 5% rate increase, which is about $1.90 per month, or about a $22.80 annual increase for the average domestic rate payer. It does, however, when we're talking about this rate increase and we're comparing it to other agencies, we would still continue to be the lowest or most cost-effective provider within the agencies that we normally do our comparison with. The next closest agency would be the city of Coachella, and their rate is $5.87 per month higher than the recommended 5% rate increase. On sanitation, the proposed rate increase is 8.5% or $2.45 per month, $29 annually. Those two combined, recognizing that some people may pay both the domestic and the sanitation rate are $4.32 a month, or write at about $52 annually for a resident that pays both. On the canal side, we are requesting no rate increase for both the irrigation water commodity charge and the water supply surcharge. However, there are recommended increases to the Prop 218 maximum allowable amounts for the gate charges, both scheduled and unscheduled, the quagga muscle, and also surcharge, sorry, and then also the Improvement District One surcharge. And those are mostly related to labor cost recovery, chlor- additional chlorine treatment cost, and full cost recovery anticipated for, for those according to the Prop 218 Cost of Service Study and Prop 218 Notice. Spend a little bit of time on domestic, or each one of the different rate increases that are being requested. The domestic rate adjusted budget does include about $200,000 for Chrome Six water treatment, now that we have the new Chrome Six regulations. And it also includes $678,000 for the Sanus Chloride Treatment Evaluation Program that was included in the CIP budget. What is not included is any infrastructure funding or construction projects related to any Chrome Six treatments. Those are still evenly evaluated and would be considered in, in future budgets. Even with the 5% proposed rate increase, we would be utilizing about $27 million of reserves within this proposed budget. However, it would allow us to have a positive operating income of about 1.0, I think it's $4 million, with the rate increase. Without the rate increase, we'd be operating at a, at a deficit. The CIP is $63.3 million within domestic, but the majority of it, about 54 million, is either grant-funded loans or restricted funds. So there's very little pay-go funding. It's actually $2.6 million of pay-go funding. Oh, sorry, the positive operating income is 3 million. The, the deficit would be the 1.4 million if we did not adopt a rate increase. We are proposing to have the rate increase because we really want to avoid that future shock of rate increases. We talked about if we, if we don't do it one today, the money that we would anticipate getting today could offset some of those future rate increases, recognizing that we do have potentially very large projects, especially with the new Chrome Six regulations or the re-adopted Chrome Six regulations. And there is no new debt issuances within the domestic fund proposed, but there are future ones proposed for the next two fiscal years. We discussed having one in fiscal year 25, 26 for about 29 million, and then the Chrome Six would be about 510 million in fiscal year 26, 27. On the sanitation rates, we would still, again, utilize a portion of reserves even with the 8.5% proposed rate increase. The use of reserves would be about $4.4 million. And the CIP budget here is $45 million overall, with 42.8 million of improvement projects and the remainder for motor pool and district-wide projects. On the canal rates, the CIP included here is about 13.5 million, and that is all funded with the USBR loan, loan that is proposed, that is undergoing, underway. And as a reminder, we also have the curtailment revenue. It's about $14 million within this fund. So overall, we are requesting a, or proposing a budget of $553.2 million. And I'd like to go over some of these budget changes or those variances that you see towards the right of the screen. The operating expenses are reduced, and that's largely because of the water sales, water purchases, sorry, being reduced for both the state water project and the Rosedale, Rosedale Rio Bravo water, not having a purchase as well this year. And then on the debt service, you see a large increase there, the 37.5 million. The bulk of that 35.2 million is to pay off the 2022 domestic note. That requirement or that payment is due July, sorry, June 1st of 2025. It's a one-time payment, and it'll be supplemented by the USDA loan that is anticipated to be received for $24.8 million. The other adjustments would include increases to the canal debt service, which are for the irrigation laterals and the mid-canal improvements, about $613,000. And then the additional amount, or another addition, is the sanitation, state revolving fund loan for the non-potable connections at about 1.5 million. So again, the bulk of that is just the one-time payment for the 2022 domestic note that's required. And then on the capital improvements budget side, I want to recognize that there's $158.3 million. About 81% of that is funded with grants, loans, or restricted revenues, so about 128 million. So big, big accomplishment for staff to be able to secure that funding for those projects. And a couple of other things, I'll leave it on this slide. Couple other things that were noted within the staff report for the budget adoption itself that we want to highlight. The, and the canal fund within the CIP expenditures, I mentioned earlier, there were two little adjustments. One is in the capital fund, sorry, canal fund, and the other one in the stormwater fund. There is a CIP expenditures within the canal fund still remain at 16.5 million, but they do reflect an addition of $580,000 from the initial budget study session, so it's an increase because of a, a study for the L4 pump station relocation project, and the irrigation lateral was added as well. The other minor increase within the CIP budget is under the stormwater fund, and that's an addition of $2.3 million, mostly or for the North India Regional Flood Control Project and the Avenue 54 to thermal drought structure project. So those, those two additional funding, increased funding for CIP projects have been added within this budgetary request. The other item to highlight is the personnel. We do not have any new positions requested. We would remain at 570 positions. The cost of living increases estimated at 4.5%. And the, the budget resolution normally includes all of the titles, but since we have another agenda item today for a class and comp with numerous changes, we've given you a summarized version per department. And when we go back and we prepare the budget document, we would reconcile the two if the other items today are approved, and then give you a detailed listing of those changes with the budget document, the budget book. I think that was all of the highlights we wanted to provide, and I don't know if you want to take one item at a time, and we can go back on the slides. We have domestic rates first.
Do one item at a time.
We take one item at a time, then prior to board discussion, ask for public comment.
Right. So recognizing that the presentation covers all the items, we'll be able to refer back to it if we need to as we progress through the, through the items, right? So on the question of domestic rates with the 5% increase, and, and I just, I guess I want to point out, I mean, there has been a lot of interaction between staff and the board on this. I believe the last study session, staff was recommending a 10% increase, but based on signaling from the board, that was revised back to a recommendation of 5%. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct, yes. The 24% is the maximum allowable increase according to the Prop 218. We did discuss a potential 10% rate increase. Initially, it was 2.5%, but then recognizing Chrome Six literally hit us the next day, and so we had to readjust those future projections. We could do a 10% rate increase, but I, I felt the hesitation to do so immediately, and we recognize that there are lots of things to evaluate with the Chrome Six implementation, where we might want to be a little bit more conservative with the, the current rate increase. But I'd like to point out that, as Kerry mentioned, there's lots of unfunded projects that, that do necessitate some future funding. It's not just the Chrome Six, it's lots of other infrastructure that needs additional funding as well for replacement.
Yeah, no, I, I get that. I mean, the, the total dollar amount on the capital budget is massive and unprecedented. I mean, just for us to be able to accomplish that in one year, you know, I kind of question that because it's so much, you know, the 150, what was it, 158 million in one year? Big number. Okay. Well, I guess we're looking for a motion to approve the recommended 5% domestic rate increase.
And I'm sorry, just, just for the...
For the, approve the ordinance?
Approve the ordinance, but just ask one more time for public comment.
Oh, sure, yeah. Is there any public comment?
Just for the record.
You can make public comment, Jeff.
No, 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 no. I would never do that. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
That's it, John.
Do you have a question?
Carla, so just a question and, and maybe a comment, but so can you review and talk a little bit about how this, the reserves look in this fund after, and if we take this action, and how that relates to our policy?
Yes.
Obligation? Thank you.
Yes. So there is an attachment within the operating budget item within the agenda. The, under the 5% proposed rate increase, the assigned reserves would be 47.4 million, and the unassigned would be 15.9 million. And so we are fully funded within our reserves with that 5% rate increase. There's a couple of items that we, we have to consider. We talked about repaying that SRF loan because it does have that maximum annual debt service coverage. And if we wanted to repay that, that's $17.4 million. So if we made that decision during the fiscal year, if the state allowed us to do that, that would wipe out the, the unassigned reserves and also eat into the assigned reserves, which would then negate us being fully funded with reserves within the domestic fund. The other consideration with that is that the loan repayment or the 2022 domestic note repayment, if for some reason we don't receive the USDA funding because there's delays in the project, we still have to pay that on June 1st of 2025. And so that would be another draw on reserves potentially. And that amount is $35.2 million. And so although we do have fully funded reserves, we do have a lot of unknowns, and we're not sure if we'll need to temporarily pay for that 2022 bond issuance. Let's say it, it would be May of 2025.
Yeah, I think that's what I was getting to. It's important to be aware of that for future bond financing. So that's important to know. Then the other comment I would make is, and you alluded to this, is the when you compare our rate increase and what the rate would be when you combine our fixed charge and our consumption charges with the other seven agencies, I mean, we're, in many cases, we're half as much as some of the other rates. So I think that's really important for the public to acknowledge and to know. So, so that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah?
So I understand that we need to raise the rates. I just don't, I'm not sufficiently convinced that we need to do it this year. I believe that with the study session that we had, that no increases would still, we would still be above our reserve target for this year. And it would look like, and I understand what you guys are trying to do, wait so that we wouldn't have such a big increase for the following year. And there's a lot of unknowns. But because of that, and because we have such a, a big operating budget, 100, one of the largest we've ever had, and we're not sure what we can accomplish and what we can accomplish with that. I mean, even if we, if we hit an 80% and we can't do 20%, that's still going to leave us with sufficient cash. So I'll be voting no, but I, I think I'll be in the minority in this.
So, so I think Director Bianco brought up part of a question that Director Aguilar asked, but I don't think, so I think you said that we're fully funded on the reserves with the 5% increase. And then I think I heard Director Bianco say that in the study sessions, it seemed like we were fully funded without the rate increase. So what does it look like if we don't do the rate increase? Do we, do we, do we start dipping too much into our reserves to where we don't meet our obligations?
It's about a $4.4 million reduction in revenues. There's a couple of, of things, as I mentioned earlier. The operating income would be negative, so we would be utilizing reserves to pay for ongoing expenses such as salary and benefits and, and utility costs, things like that. So this would be the second year that we would be adopting a budget with, with that operating loss.
And would we still, and we would still be within our reserve policy if we did that?
We would. One of the things that we're concerned with is the maximum annual debt service coverage within the SRF loan without a rate increase. We, on paper, would not meet that unless we pulled a couple of levers, unless we maybe re-appropriated some of the property tax revenue from one fund to another that maybe doesn't have any debt service coverage requirement. We have to remember that the, the SRF loan does not allow you to utilize rate stabilization reserves in order to meet that debt coverage or that maximum annual debt service coverage ratio. The other option you would have if you didn't meet it would be to utilize one-time funding such as grants to meet the debt coverage ratio one time. But that's not an ongoing recommendation because you want your ongoing revenues to cover any debt service requirements or coverage on an ongoing basis.
Okay, and then I was wondering about the SRF loan. What project is that for?
I don't remember. Kerry, do you remember the SRF loan?
Oh, okay, the phase two.
Highway eighty-six, face two?
Oh, oh, the repayment. Okay. Yeah, okay. So if what's, what's our mechanism to draw down our reserves so that we can do it? Cause it sounds to me like you're saying we, we can't use the reserves as like rate stabilization?
Not to meet the annual debt service coverage ratio. You could still utilize it and you would still need to utilize it even with the five percent rate increase. Even with the five percent rate increase, you're drawing down reserves by twenty-seven point one million. If you have no rate increase, um, that drawdown, I believe is closer to thirty-three million.
Is that over what period is that?
That one year.
Just one year?
If I could just reinforce, one of the things that Carla has brought up, it's, this is this, without a rate increase, this will be the second year we have an operating loss. So the reserves are one-time money. What we need to do is make sure we don't have a structural deficit in our revenue and expenses. Because the expenses are going to continue to grow. We didn't cover them last year. We don't cover them this year. That almost portends a much larger increase going forward just to cover operating expenses. Things are not getting cheaper. We can use one-time money, but that doesn't create the operating structural deficit. So, which then causes problems with the debt service. But all that aside, what we should be trying to focus on is making sure that we are balanced in our revenue and expenses. There are other ways we can support drawing down the reserves by trying to do more projects. Using that one-time money to do a project and, and we are doing that. But it's, it's important to stay focused on the fact that there's always going to be expenses and there's always going to be revenue. And the closer we can get the revenue to meet the expenses, the healthier our budget is and the more successful we look financially to investors.
Okay, thank you.
John, I, um, I'll argue.
I'm, I'm done.
Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to comment on a couple of things that
You know, this budget really doesn't reflect, and that's, that's the, um, potential five hundred million dollars that is, will be required for chromium six treatment. Um, you know, not really anything to do with, you know, the district expenses and, and revenue, but, uh, it's, it's looming out there very soon. And also, you know, the North Indio area, um, where we have, uh, uh, five phases of, uh, capital uh, repair that we need to do to, uh, lines that have, uh, holes in them as big as your fist. And I think that, uh, by delaying those, um, we're running the risk of, uh, you know, boil alerts and all those things. That is not good customer service. Um, uh, this is, as Jim said, the second year of an operating loss. And, uh, you know, even with this five percent in, increase, you know, we're, we're pulling a lot out of reserves. And I, and I think it's fiscally, uh, responsible for us to try and, um, reduce that, um, pull from reserve, but also to, to meet our revenue expenses. So I'm, uh, you know, I'm in, I'm in, you know, I'm, I'll be in favor of this, uh, increase. It's a minor increase. You look across all the inflation indices and, uh, uh, I mean, that we're, this is a, a fairly decent bargain, uh, when you compare to those. So, uh, I'll be in support of this.
Thank you. Anyone else? You know, um, Carla, I think your point on, you know, I've, I've always been a pay-go guy. Um, but I understand, you know, large projects and the, and, and the benefit of debt service. But sometimes the, those covenants are not, um, necessarily good for us. And I think that the SRF loan has been identified that way. Um, it probably is better for us to pay that off and or, or renegotiate it, right? I mean, we're still trying to, to fix it before we have to pay it off. I mean, but if we can't do that, if we're not successful in, in removing or modifying those covenants that don't work for us, um, you know, this would put us in a position where we could justify paying that off. And I think, um, I think that having that flexibility is valuable to us. Um, you know, I think we do need to be financially really, um, really strong with all the challenges that are coming ahead of us. We know that they're there. Um, some of them may be worse than others, you know, we don't know. Chrome six, we don't know. Um, but it's something and it may be huge or may, may be manageable. I, I support it too. I mean, I appreciate staff coming down for, um, for a more reasonable increase than, than what we could justify. I mean, you, I agree with you. You could justify ten, but I don't think there's an appetite on this board to do that. I mean, we could, we could probably justify zero too, but it would, it would put us in a difficult position going forward. And I don't think that, that, that we want to be there with, with all the uncertainty that we have facing us. So any other comments? Do we have a motion on this item?
I'll, I'll move the motion to, um, approve the ordinance, uh, thirteen ninety-nine point one seven, adopting our twenty-four, twenty-five domestic rates.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Thank you. It's a roll call.
Yep, it is. President Powell?
Uh, aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
No.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Passes four one.
Okay, passes four one. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Carla. I know you're still here. Eight B. Go, go ahead.
Yes, so we gave the presentation. I'm happy to answer any additional questions or any questions you might have regarding the sanitation service rates that are proposed. Again, they, um, are at the maximum two eighteen, um, rate that is allowed by the, by the current notice.
This one's actually a little bigger than the other one, but I know we've seen projects and what the need is managing the warp seven flows and, and the non potable. Oh, sure. Is there anybody from the public wishing to comment on item eight B? Have remote comment though. Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve or, or a motion regarding eight B?
John, I'll move approval of ordinance uh, number fourteen twenty-seven point six.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll second it. Second from me? Any other discussion? Hearing none, why don't we go to the roll call vote?
And just to confirm, it was a motion by Director Aguilar, second by President Powell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you. Five oh.
That was approved. Uh, onto Canal, Carla. Same thing, I know it was already in the presentation.
Yes.
And this actually is a fairly large, um, increase on the, on the gate charges. And I, I'm really curious to see if this pupil's behavior is modified as a result of this. I, I suspect we'll see some of that, you know? Yeah.
Yeah, again, no, no, um, actual rate increases or just within the surcharges, um, within the Canal Fund.
Right, yeah. But, but the gate charge one is pretty big.
It is.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I know. It's it's, uh, like, like I said, we may see fewer, fewer orders and changes as a result. You know, I mean, honestly.
It's getting up there.
It's getting up there.
We also raised the Quagmire muscle surcharge. I mean, e- every year, I think we've done that for eight years in a row.
I know. It's the same as my pool guy, uh, who keeps telling me that, that chlorine keeps going through the roof. I mean, this is the big driver here. This is Yeah. Yeah.
Fair enough. Is there a motion to approve, uh, eight C?
Yes, I'll move approval of, uh, eight C ordinance number fourteen thirty-seven point two.
I'll second that.
I'll, I'll wait for the professional to do the roll call.
Any other comments, discussions, questions? Public comment, anybody?
I thought we had one, but it was Sylvia.
Do we?
Can we, I'm sorry, I did not catch the motion or a second. Can someone repeat that?
Nelson and Powell.
Nelson and Powell, thank you. Um, okay, I'll go ahead and call for this.
Roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
A pass five oh. And then we have the, uh, operating and capital improvement budget.
Resolution, yes.
Is this the first time we're over five hundred million? I think it is.
I don't know.
I did not research that.
Think it is.
Yes, it is.
It's gotta be.
It is.
Go ahead.
Sorry, again, this is, um, the culmination of all of the expenditures that we're proposing within the budget. Again, the detailed, um, full-time employees will be listed in the actual budget document. And it's a total of five hundred and fifty-three, five hundred and thirty-three point two or point, almost point three million dollars for the total operating budget of the district.
Carla, I have a question regarding the legal claim contingency accrual.
The what I'm saying?
It's the sixty-five million legal claim contingency accrual. So that's not carried forward?
Um, it is. It's, it's a balance that sets aside part of the, the reserve funding to pay off these potential litigation claims within each one of the funds that they reside in. And so we're recognizing that that is not, um, part of the reserve balance. That's, um, separated in order to meet that potential.
Okay, I see. So it's spread. It's still the same amount. It's just spread throughout the funds?
Right.
I see. Okay, thank you.
I have some good questions.
The money that we're receiving for water?
For the curtailment?
The fourteen million? Is that also being held somewhere where it's not being embedded as part of the operating budgets of, of, uh, of a particular fund to offset increases? So are we holding that somewhere?
So what I heard during the study sessions for Canal is that the board wanted to currently, um, set that aside and not utilize that now. And so what we'll be doing this year within the reserve funding or within the reserve categories is separating out that portion that we've already received. It's, uh, I can tell you exactly how much. It'll be fourteen million for next year. And we've received, uh, twenty-six million dollars so far, um, on a cash basis.
And we're holding that somewhere?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be within the Canal Fund. Um, that's where the reserves are being recognized, but it'll be a category within there. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So it's twenty-eight, uh, point four million with the current curtailment agreement and the initial one that, that was completed.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Motion and a second? This one is not a roll call, is it?
No, it's not. This is a resolution, so it's not legally required.
Not legally required. Okay, any other discussion on this? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So that passed four one. Thank you. And then we have, um, the GAN limit, uh, for fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yes. So this is a lovely requirement from the California Constitution since nineteen seventy-nine. Each year, agencies that receive property tax revenue that is, um, appropriated to the agency needs to do an assessment of their, um, uh, there's documents provided by the Department, um, of Finance within the state of California. We do adjustments for inflation and adjustments for population and then come up with the new GAN limit. It's, um, audited by our auditors, not by the state, but it is a requirement with the budget adoption and the state requirement as well. So, um, based on the proposed property tax revenue of sixty-one point nine million dollars included within the budget, we do have additional capacity of about four point six million dollars of additional property tax revenue that we could collect, um, and still be below that GAN limit, um, that is recognized for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. It is important to note that the state water project portion is not included within the calculation. Happy to answer any questions you might have regarding the calculation.
Is the Lake Orville fix in that?
I'm sorry?
Is the Lake Orville fix, the spillover that we, we owe, uh, i- in that number?
The, this is regarding revenues for property taxes.
Correct, but don't we use that money to pay for that?
For the dam, the revenue being received, the property tax revenue being received, will we use it for the Orville expenses that are ongoing?
So right now, I believe that is still being considered.
State water project.
Yeah, Robert is, uh, not here. But, uh, I think the discussion is whether or not that can be, uh, I think we have started paying it to be honest with you, but it comes out of the state water project property tax, not the general property tax.
Okay.
I believe Pecha confirmed that at our last study session that there was already a repayment in effect.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. We don't have a motion on this one yet, do we?
No.
I'll move approval of the resolution, John.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Noting that Director Stru, Vice President Estrada is out of the room at the time. I think we can proceed, right? All right. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passed four oh with one absent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
Yeah, you made it.
Thanks, Carl. You did a good job.
Five for five.
Now we're going to pay off that loan. I'd wait it, I'd wait till later in the year, though. I wouldn't do it that way. On to eight F, Scott, um, um, class and comp implementation.
Absolutely. Good morning, President Powell, Vice President Estrada, members of the board, public and our staff. Before you is a request to authorize the general manager to implement the proposed district classification and compensation plan for all employees employed by the district with an effective date of July first, twenty twenty-four. As you recall, back in January of twenty twenty-one, we committed an obligation to our bargaining units and our employees to conduct a classification and compensation plan for the district. Um, back in our negotiations, uh, with, uh, both CVWDEA, ACVWDM, uh, which is the Association of Coachella Valley Wanted District Managers Unit and the asset, which is our supervisory unit. Uh, the district committed that obligation to execute a RFP for a class and comp with COF and Associates. That was back in twenty twenty-one. As you know, there's a lot of changes that have happened since twenty twenty-one. Uh, primarily that being of COVID. Uh, the ACVWDM unit has now been decertified, so that, those individuals that were part of that unit are now part of the unrepresented confidential at-will classifications. So in Ja, in twenty twenty-one, COF began that comprehensive classification review of the district's job classifications. At that time, the workforce was five hundred and sixty-eight FTEs. We also had two part-time employees assigned to three hundred and forty-nine classifications of work. So right there, you can, you pretty much understand why the classification and compensation study was, was needed. If you have five hundred and sixty-eight employees and three hundred and forty-nine classifications of work, that basically is telling you that a lot of individuals had classifications separately for themselves versus the classification of work that was needed. So with, with this classification compensation plan coming in, we worked with COF to ensure a sound classification plan was delivered. Those strategies included to develop classification concepts. Those strategies included to develop classification concepts for consistency in categories and levels of work across the district, including titling conventions, identify those opportunities for consolidating classifications through the use of broad classifications in all departments, review the levels of classification series to identify whether differences are based on work complexity, length of service, certifications, and any alternatives. Also to review and revise the minimum qualifications and certifications to ensure that there's no barriers to employment, review and revitalize the FLSA exemptions for compliance with the Fair Labor Standards Act, and enhance understanding and recognition of how pay equity resides in a comprehensive and equitable classification plan. As a result of this classification study, COF proposed a classification structure that reduced the total number of classifications from three hundred and forty-nine to one hundred and forty-one. We um also uh going into that one hundred and forty-one classifications, the total number of district classifications that were unused that we're recommending to be abolished are a hundred and twelve. As it relates to particular bargaining units in the CBWDEA, which is the Employee Association Unit, the total number of classifications that have been reduced in that bargaining unit are seventy-three. The total number of clas- classifications after the implementation, if approved, will be seventy-six. And we also have released three classifications that were part of the EA uh bargaining unit to the confidential at-will unrepresented unit, and those include the risk, risk management specialist, the senior risk manager specialist, and the government affairs regional program coordinator. Under the asset, which is the supervisory unit, the total number of classifications reduced in that bargaining unit are twenty-three, and the total number of classifications that we'll have after implementation of the classification and compensation plan will be forty. In the confidential unrepresented at-will classification impacts, the total number of classifications reduced in that bargaining unit are zero, and the total number of classifications after implementation will be twenty-five. This proposed classification plan provides the district a systematic classification structure based on the interrelationship duties performed and the natural level of the responsibilities and other work-related requirements. So again, the classification compensation study was to look at classifications, make sure that we have a, a classification infrastructure for the district moving forward, as well as the compensation plan. The goals of the compensation plan were to assist the district in developing a compensation philosophy that provides a competitive pay and benefit plan that includes internal alignment relationships, where those are supervisory, subordinate, uh director, assistant general managers, and the general manager uh as well, which are based upon market data, and to assure that the plan is fiscally responsible and meets the needs of the district to remain competitive with recruitment and retention of qualified staff. When we did this study, the study compared CBD, CVWD amongst twelve comparator agencies. Those findings placed the district at five point eight percent above the market median for base compensation and four point two percent above the market median for total compensation, which includes benefits. Those comparator agencies were identified as the City of Indio, City of Palm Springs, City of San Bernardino, Desert Water Agency, Eastern Municipal Water District, Elsinore Valley Municipal District, Imperial Irrigation District, Inland Empire Utilities Agency, Irvine Ranch Water District, Long Beach Water Authority, Rancho California Water District, and Western Municipal Water District. And while we looked at all those twelve agencies, we also understood that some of those agencies were not like CBWD. So we asked COF to actually uh look at those agencies and kind of curtail the agencies that were more like CBWD. When they did that, we came up with four agencies that were more like CBWD than not, and those agencies were Eastern Municipal Water District, Inland Empire Utilities Agency, Irvine Ranch Water District, and Western Municipal Water District. To remain competitive in the workforce market, especially in Coachella Valley, the Board of Directors provided direction to staff to establish a compensation philosophy that provides classifications to be set within ten percent of the market median of base compensation as it relates to those four comparator agencies. The plan provides also incumbents that are grant- to be grandfathered in their existing salary schedule if their classifications are recommended for salary schedule decreases as to not negatively impact the employee. However, any new hires that are brought in after July first will then be brought in at the new decreased salary schedule as a result of the classification plan. Additionally, this plan provides increases for salary schedule ranges for those incumbents who are in classifications that were below the ten percent market median to catch them up to the ten percent market median. Finally, this plan aligns all classifications vertically to create a minimum threshold compensation spread of approximately ten percent between supervisor and direct downline subordinates to ensure that we do not have impaction or compaction issues as it relates going forward. The impacts of the classification alignment and implementation on CBWDEA, salary schedules that will be decreased with the new classification will be twenty-nine. Salary schedules that will be increased with the new classification will be forty-seven. Salary schedules that will have no change with the new classification will be sixty-nine. And the total anticipated cost on the EA uh group itself for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five is two hundred and ninety-seven thousand and seventy-two dollars. On the asset compensation impacts, we have salary schedules that will be decreased with the new classification as eight, and salary schedules that will be increased with the new classification are seven. Those with no change with the new classification plan are forty-eight, and the total anticipated cost for that group is sixty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars. And then on the confidential unrepresented at-will compensation impacts, one salary schedule will be decreased, nine salary schedules will be increased, and fifteen will have no change with a total anticipated cost of forty-one thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars. Again, the Board of Directors authorized the general manager to contract with COF and Associates to conduct a district-wide classification and compensation study on January twelfth, twenty twenty-one. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have as it relates to the overall cost, and the overall cost on the budget for this item is at four hundred and three thousand sixty-one dollars.
So I think, I just wanna say, you know what? One of the main reasons that makes CBWD so good is, is a lot of our dedicated employees. And you can see that uh we've had employees here for thirty years, twenty years, sometimes more. And um recently, I mean, since I've been here, the last eight years, we've seen a lot of people leave. A lot of dedicated, uh, good, smart people that have left uh the district um and moved on to other water districts. Um, and uh they're, they're thoroughly missed. And so um I think that going through this uh uh, holding our word to the bargaining unit that we were gonna do this, um and then following through with it, I, I think is uh, was the right thing to do, to make sure that we have, we, we keep this district rolling with, with uh the, the right people. I think we do have the right people. We just want to retain them. And, and moving forward, we, we have hires that may need, we need people to, to come in, and we play, we have vacancies that, and we want to be attractive.
And Director Bianco, I thank you for that, that, that comment, and I thank the board in general for your guidance and, and ability to listen uh to employees, the ability to, to believe in your employees. Um, this is a, this is a huge undertaking. Um, this required a lot of meet and confers with asset, our bargaining unit, with EA and our bargaining unit. Um, we reached tentative agreements with them. It was a collaborative process. Um, uh, we heard from the employees um on some of the changes that uh were being provided as recommendations. We made some changes based on their, their recommendations as well. But at the end of the day, this is a classification and compensation plan that when I leave or anybody else leaves, that sets an infrastructure that we did not have when I came on board here. So I'm, I'm, I'm very, very pleased with, with all of our employees. I'm pleased with my team. I'm pleased with council, so um I echo your comments, and I thank you for your direction. The ability to grandfather um employees in their current salary schedule where there may be a decrease uh recommended on that salary schedule, that's where the board really gave the direction and guidance, and we, we provided that communication to the employee units, and they were very grateful and very appreciative that you guys were very supportive of that. So very thankful and in a lot of aspects as it relates to this classification comp plan.
We put a lot of hours in this as, as a board, and we, we know that you've done, you know, a hundred times more than that, but.
Yeah, I just wanna point out that um you mentioned that uh you know, one of the things we could have done for the folks that were over was to cut, to cut their pay, and uh we decided not to do that.
That's right.
And I know we had some communication. Um, Sylvia, I noticed the last sentence of this email.
I reprint, you should, I reprinted it, did.
Is there, oh, there's.
Yeah, I cut it out.
Oh, there it is. Am I going crazy? Uh, it wasn't on that one. All right, there's two.
It's me.
Let me just read it. Anyways, we, we decided um not to cut people's pay based on that study, but to, but to make those adjustments over time. And, you know, I just wanna say that that's partly due to our, you know, sense that, that we just wouldn't be right to do that. Uh, and I, not that it was recommended, it was just an option. And um, you know, I guess not everyone agrees with that, but, but I appreciate the board for, for agreeing on that.
Me too.
Scott, you mentioned, um, by the way, thank you for all your work on this and to the staff and to the bargaining units, but you mentioned an annual increase cost of like four hundred and thirty thousand, but aren't there some long-term savings associated with increased efficiencies and reducing the number of classifications? Can you just talk about that for a minute?
Yeah, so um we anticipate that with those salary schedules, I mean, you're gonna have an influx, right? You'll have an influx of people going into a higher salary schedule, and you'll have uh, uh, people that will uh maybe be promoted or leave a certain classification, and the new incumbents will come in at the lower salary schedule. So you have cost savings that will offset on that. Um, at any given time, too, we have vacancies as well. So the vacancies, uh, we could have twenty vacancies at a month, so the, the cost of the vacancies can also offset the total uh fiscal year impact as well. So that's, that's, you know, those would be the costs that, that come into play.
Yeah, that's important. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, from my perspective, just to add on to what you said, John, is that, that um you know, aligning classifications with domestic and agriculture and sanitation and, and you know, all the business units that we have. I mean, it's really key. You mentioned that there's, you know, could be one person in one classification, but they're doing the same thing in, in all the other business units. So, so it's, it's really a good thing to, to aggregate them, be fair with uh employees, and uh I, I really like that aspect of, of the new classification methodology.
Yeah, and I'll just say that I really appreciate these types of studies. I know that in general, in agencies over the years, um, sometimes folks end up doing other things, and sometimes they do uh tasks that at one point were in a different classification, and so I think doing these types of studies periodically and being able to properly place folks, give them credit for what they do, pay them for what they do, um, I think that's great. Uh, and so uh as a staffer of an agency, uh, I, I appreciate uh these types of studies that, that really make sure that you're being compensated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. So I believe we, we need a motion for some action here.
Oh, make a motion.
To approve?
Yes.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passed five oh.
Thank you all.
Scott, okay. Uh, G. Jeff, were you gonna do this?
Actually, G, that's the next one.
H.
H.
Jeff will do.
Oh, what am I looking at? I'm sorry, yeah, yeah. E, I, I did. I just jumped over G. All right, let's do G. The G, this is just housekeeping, right? Repealing the existing one. All right.
John, I'll move, I'll move item G.
Yeah. 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 Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
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 It's, it's an ordinance?
It's an ordinance.
Ordinance?
Oh, no. All right.
Take back the ayes.
Roll, roll call vote, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Passed five oh.
Well done, Chris.
Yeah. All right, now H.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is also a, a housekeeping item in terms of the previous two actions that were taken. Uh, because the general manager has his own agreement, and because it needs to be approved in open session at a regular meeting, um, the recommendation is for the board to take action uh under, and for the report to be ma- made under the Brown Act as follows. Uh, the uh required, uh, the final action would adjust the current base salary from three sixty-two, seven eighty to a new base of three seventy-seven, nine eight seven in order to be in, in a, a compliance with the new classification and compensation plan. Uh, this second amendment would also include the discretionary bonus option based on the goals set for twenty twenty-four. The recommendation is to adopt this second amendment with both items so that at the end of the year, the board ref- can refer to one amendment for both, not just the compensation, but the goals that have already been set. The recommendation is to approve this second amendment.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to approve this? Uh, eight H?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Good job, Jim.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Jim, we're glad to have you as our um GM. Thank you.
Happy to have the staff we got to support me.
I agree. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passed five oh. That was a resounding five oh right there. With enthusiasm. Reading communications, we had two on the log, I guess, plus the one that came in today.
Uh, it's on the log, I think she had.
Is it on the log? All right.
On the communications log, yes. We received one this morning, which was distributed um via hard copy to the board and added to the log and updated.
Thank you. Uh, board general comments. Uh, Director Nelson?
Um, no, not, no- nothing too great. I, I just, uh, today's uh Glenn Peterson's last day at the Metropolitan Auditorium.
Oh.
And he's been, he's retiring and uh moving on to greener pastures and uh um, had some time to spend with him this weekend and uh, which was uh terrific. And um, you know, he's been a, a great supporter of uh the CBWD metropolitan uh relationship and real, I think, key figure there, former um, um, president of Aqua and uh has been a great mentor and tutor for me, too. So just wanted to acknowledge him. Uh, and um, uh, that's, that's it for this one.
Is he on the CRB right now?
Uh, he is no longer on the CRB. He was replaced by Gloria um. Oh my gosh, I'm having a seat.
That's okay.
Yeah, Gloria.
You know, I know he's, I think he's still a delegate on CRU, so I imagine we're gonna be looking for a new
Yeah.
CRU person. Okay. Okay, um, John?
Yeah.
Anthony?
Uh, quickly, I, we've been engaging the assembly member, Assembly Member Garcia, for probably the past month or so, be heavily six issue, and we are scheduled. We are scheduled to have a, a follow-up meeting on Wednesday at two PM. And so um, I'm not sure if, if you've seen the letter, but there was a uh, a coalition letter that was put together uh by various uh water agencies. I think we hit, what, like twenty, Scott?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, and um
Two others.
So that's part of the effort that we're making to, to try to sound the alarm on some of the chromium six concerns that we have. And so we have a meeting on Wednesday. Just wanna let you know.
Gloria Gray?
Gloria Cordaro.
Cordaro. Thank you. Um, yeah, no, no comments from me. Uh, do we have any board requests for future agenda items? Nope. Um, meetings, reports, there's only three on here. What happened?
My God.
Um, May twenty-ninth, uh, Director Estrada?
Sure, I, yeah, that, this um must have been a meeting for preparing for this infrastructure uh networking summit that we were part of. And so that was a pre-meeting to go over um, our role in the panel, what we would uh talk about in the panel.
Um, it was very structured, so we had to prepare for it.
And then you had the panel?
Then I actually, yeah, and then I had the panel that was on Friday, um, uh, last Friday, I believe. No, not two Fridays ago. And it was in Costa Mesa. It was pretty well attended, uh, US Senator Padilla was the keynote speaker. Um, Chairman Ortega from Met was, uh, made some closing remarks. Uh, it, the the panel was from about, uh, twelve, twelve PM to about four PM, it was two separate panels. The first one was made up of mostly, uh, county supervisors and and council members from around Southern California. Um, they tried to, I believe they had, um, a few counties represented, San Bernardino, uh, San Diego Riverside, LA, uh, Ventura County was there. Um, and they wanted to talk about infrastructure, not just water, but it was also about, uh, transportation, energy, um, and water. And I was in a panel with, um, a few other, uh, water agencies, including, uh, a mayor here, local mayor. I thought it went, I thought it went well, we prepared for it, so I'm happy that I was able to work with Scott and Lorraine to, uh, kinda get a handle on that, I think the panel went great. Uh, there's a recording of it on YouTube, it was hosted by, uh, uh, Monta Miguel. Um, they were kind of the prime sponsors, uh, their GM kind of put it together. Uh, but we were also sponsors, so, uh, a bunch of water agencies kind of helped with the event. But if you wanna see the video, it's on, it's on Monta Miguel's, uh, website, uh, YouTube page. And that's it.
All right, uh, we had a principals meeting, um, with the Agro Calianta on June third. Castle and I were both there, along with some staff, Jim missed that one, lucky you. Uh, some staff on the phone, they're on the Zoom. Are there any other meetings we need to cover?
John, I just have one, on June fourth, I I attended a section five contractors, um, uh, group call. Um, Jim was on it, Robert was on it, and, um, continuing to discuss, uh, the Lower Basin, uh, response to u- upper basin issues. And, uh, um, I I think that the Lower Basin right now is in a really good place in terms of, uh, working together with, uh, Arizona and Nevada and having solid, uh, data and plans going out there. And, uh, I think we we, I I I feel really good about the Lower Basin plan. And the Upper Basin has a ways to go.
Thank you. Any others? Nope. Okay, is there a motion to approve per diem for those meetings?
I'll make a motion to approve per diem.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed five oh. General Manager report.
Yes, sir, again, I appreciate the board's support, um, and all the hard work that staff went in. This is probably one of, this is probably the most difficult, uh, board meeting that we have all year long, where we look at rates and we look at the budget. Um, this one was even more complicated because of the class and comp. But I appreciate the board's support in in all of those. I I just realize that sometimes it makes, uh, for difficult choices. Uh, but I think, uh, I think we're in a good place, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, uh, the sites project, you may have heard sites project, uh, had a, there was a SEQA challenge. The, um, SEQA was completed for the sites project, uh, it was then challenged. Uh, under a new California law, it qualified for a streamlined process, meaning that the process by which one could challenge under SEQA and then have that ruling issued was much, uh, much more, uh, uh, streamlined in terms of how SEQA cases can sometimes take years to resolve. So under this new law and the fact that the sites project qualified for that SEQA matter, there was a group of, uh, of challengers to these, uh, EIR that was approved. Uh, the the court ruled that the EIR was, uh, a- adequate and that the challenges raised by the environmental groups did not, uh, rise to the point of challenging the validity of the EIR. Uh, that means that the sites project, at least for the SEQA process, can move forward, uh, they now move on to the water rights phase. I just wanted to mention that under the new, this new streamlined process, if one were to appeal this trial court decision, they would have to do so by the, I think it's by the end of this month. So it is a much faster process, um, there will certainly be challenges moving forward, but in terms of the SEQA EIR pro- uh, part of the project, it has with, uh, standard, withstood, uh, court challenge.
Thank you.
Hey Jeff, I have a question about that, I I I heard a report that there was a five-day, um, window for appeals. Uh, could you confirm either by the end of the month or the, you know, five-day, what, whatever it is?
The actual deadline is.
Could you confirm that?
Absolutely.
Uh, and get back to me? And then, um, if there is an appeal, could you notify the board that?
Of course.
Yeah, thank you.
Huh, yeah, thanks. Any departmental reports? Nope.
No, sir.
Fair enough, at this time, the board will recess into closed session to consider the items listed on the agenda. Following closed session, we will reconvene and report out. I really can't see anything in there. Good, a regular meeting is reconvened, we do not have any reportable action from closed session, and with no further business, we're adjourned.